Good evening. I'm David Summers. I'm the publisher of The Long Beach Post. Welcome to our candidate forum for the second council district. Welcome to our candidates. We have all of the candidates here with us this evening. Our moderators for tonight, I'll be introducing them in just a minute, but in addition to our audience here at Eleanor, all of you that are watching online on The Long Beach Post or our social media platforms, thank you very much. I want to say thank you especially to the crew here at Eleanor. Andrew, Heather, Michelle, thank you for hosting this here in the district and to DLBA for partnering with The Post on this important forum. Just a couple of housekeeping things for anyone watching home at night or you here in the room. As a disclosure, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that one of our candidates this evening is the former owner and publisher of The Long Beach Post, Cindy Allen. Cindy does not have any involvement in The Post, has not for 18 months, has no information about tonight's forum, has not been involved in The Post since she sold The Post a year and a half ago. It's important for us to point out so that you know that she has no involvement in this event or our operation at The Post. So I'm going to hand it over to Austin.
Thank you, David. Good evening, everybody. My name is Austin Mator with the Downtown Long Beach Alliance and I want to echo David's comments in thanking everybody joining us tonight whether in person or at home. I also want to thank Eleanor and their staff for hosting this event. The DLBA is happy to partner once again with The Long Beach Post on this candidate forum, both the first district as well as the second district are two vital components of our downtown community and we feel that such forums as these provide an opportunity for the residents of downtown to really understand what their leaders have in mind or what their future leaders may have in mind regarding their community, whether that be housing or any other issues. We think it's really important to educate the voters before the election happens. Just a quick and final reminder regarding the DLBA and The Post, we will not be endorsing any candidates tonight. So really, this is an objective opportunity for the residents of downtown as well as the city of Long Beach to really just hear from the folks that are before you and to not look at the DLBA or The Long Beach Post as endorsing any of the candidates tonight. With that, thank you all so much.
So to introduce our candidates, let me first introduce our moderators. Melissa Evans, managing editor for The Long Beach Post. Kelly Puente, senior reporter for The Long Beach Post. Kelly, Melissa, take it away.
Thank you, David, and welcome to the candidates again. Thank you guys for being here. We are, the format for tonight will follow the format for the District One debate that we held a couple of months ago. So we'll ask you all a series of questions to start and then we'll move into some individually tailored questions. And then at the end, we're going to allow each candidate to ask one other candidate a question. So for opening statements, candidates will have a minute. For the most of the other questions, you'll have about a minute and a half and we will cut you off. So we ask that you just please be brief and keep your answers succinct. And I will say too, the more specific you can be in your answers, the better. We will ask follow-up questions as we have questions throughout the debate. So with that, I will introduce the candidates. Starting from the back, we have Cindy Allen. We have Jeanette Barrera. We have Jesus Cisneros. Here in the front, we have Robert Fox. We have Eduardo Lara. We have Nigel Lifcy and we have Ryan Lum. So welcome and I will turn it over to Kelly.
Yes, so we are going to start with opening statements and you have one minute each and we will start with Cindy.
My name is Cindy Allen and I'll tell you a little bit about myself. I grew up on the west side of Long Beach. I often say the rural west side of Long Beach. I went to Stevens Junior High. I went to Long Beach Poly where I was student body president. I attended Long Beach City and I went to Long Beach State where I earned a master's degree in public administration. Growing up on the west side of Long Beach in the underserved community inspired me to want to become a police officer. So I joined the Long Beach Police Department back in a time when very few women were doing that job. I got seriously injured in the line of duty and I had to have a disreplacement surgery and start over again. So I started several businesses in downtown, right here in downtown Long Beach. And I want to build upon my record of community service and serve as your next councilwoman. Thank you very much.
For the past 10 years, I have been serving Long Beach residents in mental health, in social work and education. And I could no longer sit back and watch our local government continue to pass policy that is pushing out residents out of their home, out of their apartments and primarily affecting our elderly community, right there on fixed incomes, our students who are coming here who are being exploited with high tuition costs and more importantly, our working class who are forced to pay work two jobs just to pay off somebody else's property while driving for Lyft and Uber. But more importantly, I'm hope, my hope is that after this forum that you will be able to identify which candidates are up here that are here to serve the residents versus their own financial gain or their own interests. And my hope is that you'll realize that I've been here serving you prior to this election and afterwards I will continue to be going out to your homes, not only looking for your vote, but providing you resources and improving your quality of life. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Jesus Cisneros. Why am I here? I'm not a politician. I'm just the average person like you, the average person that woke up one day and saw the change. Crime has been going up for the last year and a half. There's people moving to the deserts because they can't afford to live here. There's homeless are taking over our cities. Business owners are losing their businesses because of the homeless because they can't do their business outside. The parking situation, it's getting worse. We were just known, we were just notified at the state of the city that over 90 big projects are coming to downtown Long Beach. So what's going to happen to our city? What's going to happen with congestion? What's going to happen with parking? What's going to happen with overpopulation and traffic? What's going to happen? So what do we need to do? We need to join together. We need to fight back. We don't want to run to the deserts. We don't want to pay high rents. We don't want any of that. What we need to do is get together. This is our time. This is our time to take Long Beach back. I'm just the average person. And one more time, what I want you to remember out of all of this, I'm the only politician here tonight that is not taking one penny from anybody. Thank you.
I'm Robert Fox. I'm a proud member of the Long Beach Reform Coalition. We formed several years ago because we were watching the city go in a wrong direction, leaving the citizens out in the decision-making process. I came to the city 35 years ago and I have been in leadership positions for the neighborhoods of the city ever since. I founded all of the neighborhood associations with other people, of course, except Orca, which came a little bit later in the downtown sector. I founded Alameda's Beach, the Broadway Corridor. I'm still president. You're not president of a neighborhood association unless you know how to listen and make coalitions and make collaborative effort to solve problems. I have such faith in the citizens of Long Beach. It's like we come together and we solve things, even if the city council isn't on board. We are a remarkable people and we have a remarkable town and I want to bring our voice back to the city government. Thank you so much.
Hi, Long Beach. My name is Eduardo Lara and I'm running for city council to be your champion on affordable housing, the homelessness crisis, climate change, and yes, parking. Let me tell you why. My parents immigrated here from San Luis Potosi, Mexico, and both of them worked diligently in order to give me opportunity. My dad as a janitor, my mom as a cafeteria worker, and through their hard work was able to inspire me to go through my education all the way to getting a PhD in education. I now have taught for Cal State Long Beach for the past 10 years and every single day I teach youth and I see that the problems that we have in our city are definitely affecting our students and then they are reflecting what's going on in the larger community. So with me, 20 years of building opportunities for our youth will translate into being your champion in city council and ensuring that we have affordable housing, fixed parking, and of course, our homeless crisis. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nigel Lifcy. I just to give you some background about myself. I'm born and raised in Los Angeles. I have a bachelor's degree in economics from Boston University. I still work in the finance industry as a portfolio accountant. I've lived here in Long Beach for 11 years and during that time, I co-founded a company called Urban Society Long Beach, which provides DJ services for private events around town as well as hosting our own public events. That's quite an array of experiences as an accountant, business owner, and sometimes DJ. But what that diverse set of experiences has given me and built within me is a sense of collaboration, a willingness and ability to work well with others in order to achieve a common goal. As a candidate to represent District Two on the city council, our community's goals, I believe, are to alleviate parking congestion, increase affordable housing options, and reduce homelessness. And those are my goals, those are your goals, that I've heard throughout the community. Once again, my name is Nigel Lifcy. I'm sure we'll be discussing those issues and several others this evening. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ryan Lum and I've been living here in Long Beach for nearly 20 years and in that entire time here in District Two. And a lot's changed since I've lived here, mostly for the better. However, I'm running for city council because I feel there are two major issues that our city needs to urgently tackle or else there's going to be some major dire consequences. And these two crises are climate change and affordable housing. I've dedicated the last seven years of my full-time work towards climate change activism and plant-based activism on my YouTube channel, Happy Healthy Vegan. We have over like 31 million views, but I'm sorry, guys. I had a mind blank there. What I'm getting at is I've, oh man, sorry, guys. I'm not used to public speaking. I speak all the time on YouTube, but it's just like in front of people, I kind of clam up a little bit. So I'm slowly getting over that. But as far as affordable housing goes, I've lived in San Francisco before I moved here to Long Beach and I've seen firsthand what happens when real estate prices spiral out of control. The average one-bedroom now, there is almost $4,000 a month.
Ryan, your time is up, sorry.
All right, no problem.
Great. So first question, one of the biggest issues in the district, obviously parking and traffic congestion, the Broadway Corridor. And so we're going to ask you and we're going to start with Jeanette. The city has attempted to get residents out of their cars by reducing traffic lanes, adding the Broadway Corridor lane and parking availability in some cases. Do you agree with this approach? And if not, what is the solution to the district's parking issues?
Okay, I'm going to need you to repeat. You said that the city has implemented the different...
Yeah, they've reduced the traffic lanes on the Broadway Corridor and then in some cases they've reduced parking as well. And do you agree with the city's approach to traffic congestion? And if not, what is the solution to the district's parking issues and traffic?
Okay, so I definitely don't agree with the Broadway Corridor, right? And so that seems like that's the basis of the question. And here's why. One, it took away parking. Two, it's affecting the businesses on Broadway. Three, there's blind spots and although I understand the contextual agreement that the city made with the federal and state in terms of SB, I believe it was SB1, in terms of funding, however, I just don't find it safe. I feel like all it's done is just bring congestion to Ocean or to Third because people don't feel comfortable driving on there. I do believe that there do need to be changes made, however, I, from what I understand and speaking with different elected officials, that if they decide to, let's say, remove the bike lanes, that they would have, they would be breaking the contextual agreement that they made with the state or federal monies that they took on that. And also, we would have to pay that money back. So I do have concerns about that as well in terms of like fiscal management. And was there any other questions in that?
How would you solve the parking problems? What are your ideas for solutions?
So overall, just not, okay. So the one-occupant car is no longer self-sustainable. We are in a climate crisis. I'm not interested in having conversations or trying to justify people continuing to drive one cars while carbon emissions are being released and while our last parking study suggested that, I was just getting started. I was just getting started.
Jesus. Plain and simple. I like basic answers. So my basic answer is this, I don't agree with the corridor. As I go door knocking in the evenings, number one complaint is the corridor besides homeless and other issues. It has brought many problems. Parking, for God's sakes, there's no parking. The people that live within the small blocks in between, they complain, they're saying, hey, now they're taking our parking. Everybody's fighting for parking. So what can we do? Let's not become downtown L.A. Let's have the city now that we have the chance before all those big projects come, before more people move in, let's bring city-funded parking lots. There's a lot of vacant lots that we can turn into city parking lots. We really can. Because if not, the private industry is going to come in and they're going to start charging $20, $30 a day to park. That's exactly what happened with other cities. So we need to start having city-funded parking. Another one, I'm the only candidate that's strong enough to say, I don't like parking tickets. I don't like those little mirrors that charge you $75 a ticket because when certain people live on fixed incomes, when the seniors, when college students, when certain people live on fixed incomes, it's really hard to pay one, two, three citations a month because at the end, the city is not making money off those little coins we put in, they're making money off the parking citations. So I, that's how I'm going to fix it. If elected one more time, I'm going to bring in city-funded parking lots, one. And number two, I will abolish the parking mirrors. Thank you.
Robert.
Hi. As president of the Broadway Corridor, I am completely opposed to the road diet. We've lost 15 businesses already on the Broadway Corridor. These are not corporations, these are small business owners. They took away over 100 parking lot, parking spaces from us and that's unacceptable, particularly in Alameda's Beach, which is completely impacted by parking. We have parking-impacted designated areas of the city, including Belmont Shores. So parking is a really big issue. We don't have an organized parking manager here and that should be something that the city hires in our management staff to coordinate the creation of good parking. Partly, this is because of poor planning. We made development in the downtown with lowered parking requirements. So the flow from downtown into Alameda's Beach and other neighborhoods has been horrendous. We're going to have a parking battle if we don't do permitted parking in Alameda's Beach and North Alameda's Beach. We need to create parking structures with public-private partnerships. They're workable and they're doable. I went to Ann Arbor, Michigan and got the blueprints for the city manager so that he could look at it, vent it to the street or rent it out to the commercial interest during the daytime and the neighborhoods at night. I would reduce the parking tickets from $75 down to $45 in parking-impacted areas of the city. And if you're in Eldorado Park with a big garage, you can pay the 75 bucks. But I think there's solutions here on multiple levels and funding for this is really important.
Your time's up. So I have a two-pronged approach, short-term, long-term, to fixing parking. Short-term, we need to audit red zones, yellow zones, green zones, ensure that those zones, do we all need all those zones and can we convert them to regular parking? Number two, we need to publicize a little-known ordinance in the city of Long Beach that residents can actually apply for a permit to park in their driveway, meaning parallel to their driveway. And we also need to lower the cost of those permits. So again, publicize and lower the cost of those permits to park. And then my long-term really is about bringing in technology into the city. Technology is actually available as of now to bring in technology that has satellite imagery, that brings data into an app that shows users where available parking is in the area. We need to limit some of the bureaucracy that doesn't necessarily allow for that technology to come in at a faster pace. And the question for me really is a question about jobs and it's a question about the environment. How so? 77% of our city work outside the city limits. So that means that they need their cars to travel and move around. We needed to also focus on job creation long-term within the city, good-paying local job creation in order to have our residents also work within the city and also rely on other forms of transportation like strong public transportation.
So the Broadway Corridor has a pretty low approval rating. Cyclists don't like it. The residents don't like it. Business owners don't like it. I was discussing this with someone last night, actually, and I kind of have an idea. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I kind of have an idea. What if we extended Broadway going east one-way? You make head-in parking on one side of the street to increase the number of parking spots and then you just have one bike lane riding along with car traffic down the middle. That's an idea that's been kicked around. I kicked it around. So that could, that is an alternative to the current Broadway Corridor situation. As far as parking generally in Alameda's Beach and North Alameda's Beach, I think we ought to leverage existing spaces from establishments. I'm thinking restaurants, bars, churches, libraries, so that residents are allowed to park in those lots during, outside of that establishment's operating hours, just to give some relief to residents who need to park overnight. And long, that would just be a short-term solution. But long-term, I kind of agree with Eduardo. I think we need to attract more jobs and businesses to Long Beach, to our downtown core, and incentivize and encourage those businesses to hire local Long Beach residents so that, in order to reduce our dependency on cars for transportation. Thank you.
All right. I may be the sole supporter of the Broadway Corridor here. Just this very morning, after doing yoga on the bluff, I rode my bike back home to Rose Park via the Broadway Bike Lane. And once again, it's a wonderful biking experience. I feel extreme, it's probably the safest place I feel cycling in Long Beach. I mean, there's no way that cars can cross, I guess they really wanted to, they could knock those green things down, that stick about three, four feet, but it's a completely separated, isolated bike lane and it's safe. And speaking of parking, I saw plenty of parking as I rode home too. Getting back to parking, where I live in Rose Park, some of these solutions people are proposing, like parking garages or empty lots, they simply don't exist. There's, all the real estate's accounted for. We have a finite amount of street available for parking. So in the short-term, I think there's a couple of things we can do to use the existing resources we have and get more people to park. For instance, street sweeping. I'm not sure why it needs to happen on a weekly basis. I mean, most neighborhoods probably wouldn't get too filthy if our streets were swept once a month and that would alleviate much of the strain on parking, particularly for people who park overnight. Why should street sweeping begin at 8:00 a.m.? Why can't it start at maybe 9:00 or 10:00 a.m., giving people a chance to really utilize a whole side of the street that they couldn't for parking?
So with regards to the Broadway Diet, I don't like it. I think that it is unsafe. It lacked community input. When I personally drive around the Broadway and I'm trying to make a right-hand turn, I consider myself a pretty good driver and I feel unsafe. This, when I even look at the way that they rolled this out, I was thinking, why wouldn't they just do one side? You know, so as far as the Broadway Diet, we have to make some changes there. At the end of the day, what I care about is making sure that this is safe for the community. I'm all for bikers. I want there to be bike lanes, but this idea was a terrible idea, so we need to revisit that. Now, as far as parking, I talked about this in my campaign from the beginning. We need to forge these private-public partnerships. Those are important. They're already doing that throughout the city. You see the 444 building. When the residents leave, the folks that work there come in and they're sharing those parking spaces. We can do that all over the city. The old Edison lot is an empty lot. Also, like Eduardo talked about, you know, intelligent parking solutions. Those are, this innovative idea that the city needs to look at, even so much as robotic underground parking. They do this, this all over the country where you have that underground and you still have your green space and your parks on top. We have to start pushing the city to get off their butt. I'm tired of talking about parking and we need to make sure that we start addressing these issues.
And second question, another major issue in the district, all of Long Beach, homelessness. What would be your first step as council member in addressing the homeless issue and would that include possibly new taxes? We'll start with you, Jesus.
New taxes? No, I'm a conservative. I don't agree with taxes. I don't agree with big government. There's different types of homeless. So everybody likes to just say the word homeless, but we have to understand there's different types of homeless. There's a type of homeless that was done under luck, maybe lost their job, was living paycheck to paycheck. There's a type of homeless that has mental health. There's a type of homeless that came out of jail, maybe abuses drugs. There's a type of homeless that's aggressive in the streets and is doing certain things to scare people away, assaulting, robbing, whatnot. So when you say homeless, it's a question where it's going to have different parts. Since I only have a minute, I will say this really quick. One, I do want more mental facilities, but I don't want them here in the residential areas. I don't want another skid row here like Los Angeles has. I do want mental facilities. I just want them away from the population, along the 7th and Freeway, in the warehouse district. Areas where they're not here, where they're not going to harm the children going to school, where the women are not going to be scared to walk to the corner store to buy milk for their kids, where they're going to affect a businessman that worked his whole life so hard to open up a business and now they're camping outside his business and they can't sell because people don't want to go there because the homeless are hanging out. So I do want to help the homeless and the way I'm going to do it is by having mental facilities outside. Number two, the certain homeless that do break the laws because I believe in equality and I do believe in equality, we're going to be treated equal, so we should treat the homeless equal if they break, if they break the law, if they defecate and urinate outside your home, if they assault your children, if they assault women. I want them arrested.
I think that is a multi-definitional issue as has been stated. However, we have a state law that happened with that you need to have as many beds as you have the homeless count. Our homeless count this year was 2,995. So we cannot, at this point in time, pick up the homeless from any place. All we can do is talk to them. So our first priority is we have to get the beds to match the homeless count. There are creative ways to do that. The Armory on 7th and Alameda's used to be our bad weather shelter, has 510 beds, one aspect of that. We have buildings like the Port Building was just abandoned, which we might want to convert into homeless housing. The question on the table here is how do you fund this? It occurs to me that all of these things that we're talking about are unfunded. And if you're going to tax the citizens of Long Beach to solve this problem, you have to remember we are the highest taxed city in the nation, equal only to Chicago. I don't think people can bear more taxes and it always translates down into bad problems for everybody else. I suggest that we audit the city of Long Beach like we did in 2012 with management partners, which they ignored completely the last time, and find out where we really stand financially and whether we can make good decisions about reallocating our budget. Thank you.
I'm going to start off my response that I absolutely do not condone the criminalization of homelessness and some of the, some of the offered solutions prior to me are reflective of segregation and concentrating of poverty and that's absolutely unacceptable in my philosophy. In terms of solutions, we need to bring in affordable housing as of yesterday. Affordable housing to me includes working intelligently with developers to ensure that they are mandated to build middle income. And the reason I say middle income is because we want to make sure that those in the middle income don't fall into the low income and to make sure that low income and those that experience impoverty also have an opportunity for that. We also need to make sure that current state law that provides for, provides that residents don't get served with eviction notices and try to put a stop to some of these. A lot of landlords are circumventing this particular law. So we want to make sure that at municipal level that we have oversight over some of this to ensure that people are aware of the law and that bad actors are not circumventing the law. And then in particular, I'm also interested in bringing in transitionary housing into the city of Long Beach. We need more of that because like we see, this is a crisis level and I always argue that homelessness knows no borders. So as such, we also need to be working closely with the county of L.A. 88 cities working together to ensure that we bring in a robust approach across the county so we can get this under control. Thank you.
So the issue of homelessness and poverty, it's an issue, it affects the entire country really and I think the issue of poverty is just as much a macroeconomic issue that could be handled in Washington DC or Sacramento as it could be handled here locally. Having said that, locally, I do believe that our budget is a reflection of our priorities and if we are going to really prioritize addressing this issue, we need to find the money for it. I would not, my first step would not be to increase taxes. My first step with, as a, with a background in financial reporting analysis will be to go through the budget and see where we can reallocate some existing funds toward solving this issue. Maybe the seasonal shelters, maybe we can find enough money to make the seasonal shelters year-round permanent. Maybe we can find enough money to build new shelters entirely. That would be my first step, not to raise taxes. On top of that, the kind of secondary issue to homelessness is the affordable housing issue. I think in terms of affordable housing, we've got to work with developers to make sure that they price and market more housing units that they're bringing online toward the low to middle, low to moderate income household. I think that would stabilize housing, housing costs across the board by reducing the crowding-out effect that's happening at the lower income segment of the housing market.
Well, I hear a lot of different solutions here and which ones going to work? This is kind of what I do on YouTube. I always research any subject matter I'm investigating to see what the actual truth says, what the scientific evidence says, what the data says. And I've only found one solution in all my research that works for solving homelessness. It's called the Housing First Model. And as the name implies, it gives people who are... It's called the Housing First Model. And as the name implies, it gives people who are experiencing homelessness a permanent place to live. It gets them off the streets, and once they're off the streets, they can be treated for whatever put them homeless first places. Is it mental health issues? Is it financial issues, drug dependency issues? And if you want to look this up yourself, go on Google, type in Housing First, Salt Lake City. They had a 90% reduction in homelessness, 90%. I've seen no other model come anywhere close to that effectiveness. As far as funding goes, well, we're already spending, I've seen figures of $30 million here in Long Beach on homelessness, but not addressing them directly. It's through police arrests, emergency medical technicians, and the like. So, a lot of money's going to them. It's not a smart way of dealing with as far as efficiency of money. So, I'm saying we have money already going towards homelessness. Let's use it smart and get people housed.
So, as I've walked around the district and knocked on doors, there's no doubt that homelessness is a number-one priority of every resident, no matter where you live. And homelessness is a very complicated issue. You have a short-term, and you have a long-term issue. Short-term, I'm going to ask that we have services available in our city 24 hours a day. Right now, the Quality of Life Officers work a Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. The Heart Department, from the Fire Department, they work 9 to 5. The Health Department's 9 to 5. And the Multi-Service Center works 9 to 5. We all agree here, I think all of us, that this is a crisis, and this is a 24-hour problem. And we need to make sure as a city that we allocate our resources to this problem. And then, the long-term is affordable housing. As I've talked to people and knocked on doors in this city, people are struggling. People are a paycheck away from not being able to afford their rent. So, it's imperative that we really attack and look at funding, so that we can be able to fund some type of affordable housing model.
The rent is too high. The rent is too high. And as being the only person up here who has actually rolled out a state initiative for early intervention homeless programs, and has allocated thousands of hours here in Long Beach assisting the residents and foster youth and people in transitioning, transitioning families, I can firsthand tell you, as a mental health provider and social worker in the city of Long Beach contracted by LA County and Department of Mental Health, that the rent is too high. You cannot talk about homelessness unless you are willing to have a conversation about affordable housing. And what we are, what I realized in my years of working here is that there is a funnel. For every one person that we get off the street, two people end up on the street. People are living paycheck to paycheck. And for me, the most important thing that when I get into office is implement policy. Let's, let's stop that funnel. Let's get people, let's take care of the ones that are already out there, and let's stop from anybody else ending up on the streets with their families. I have been working with the homeless population for four years. I have experience in Skid Row. And so, my urgency is, is that we need to implement policy like inclusionary housing, that says if a developer wants to come here and develop a Skyrise apartment for 297 units, that there is a policy that says that they are going to guarantee affordable housing, median housing, and then low-income housing to the residents here. Thank you.
So, this piggybacks off that, the city actually is considering an inclusionary housing ordinance this year that would require developers to add affordable housing units. Do you support this policy? And if so, why? I'll go with you, Robert.
First of all, we have to talk about the definitions. We've already given streamlined development and funding breaks for developers here. And it's a toxic relationship we have with developers. They fund a great deal of the campaigns here, and the office holder accounts. So, when we're talking low-income housing, everybody thinks, you know, this is the poor, poor, poor people. No, the definition is $85,000 a year. What you and I really are talking about is very, very low-income housing, which is about $35,000 a year or below. So, when you're talking inclusionary housing, you're asking a developer to set aside 10% or 20% of the building, and you have to incentivize that, because they're not going to do it there for profit. And building $900,000 condos all over downtown with 90 more projects in the, in the hopper is not solving the homeless problem or the affordable housing problem, nor is it solving the, the parking problem. We have to address this on a very basic level. We used to have common sense in this city. We had a 1.75 parking establishment for development for units. Now, we're down to 1 and 1.2. Inclusionary housing, we've got to make sure that corporate doesn't come in here and buy up the rental housing. There is no negotiation with corporations. Mom and pops are the best way that we can do this, and make sure that we have an incentivized program to assist mom-and-pop rentals to offer affordable housing.
Yes, I do agree with the city's initiative to bring about inclusionary housing. I believe housing is a human right. And I think at this point, as we've seen, and we've been talking about this for a while, it's at a crisis level. The city has been pushing forward and forward and forward initiatives to try to get something, but nothing has really gone forward. And I am glad to see that they're moving hopefully forward and boldly with inclusionary housing. That is just the one approach. This is at a crisis level, so we want to make sure we also bring in transitionary housing, that we also make sure that we have mental health and wraparound services for those that are homeless. When you are homeless, you are grappling with so many issues. And the common thinking in terms of mental health is that because you are mentally ill, you go into homelessness. Some of that happens, but it's really upside down. Poverty impacts you so much that you are susceptible to mental health concerns. When we understand that view, we begin to see that we need to support those that are at the bottom of the economic ladder, ensure that they have strong safety net in order for them to actually make it in terms of economics. And in order to do that, we need to bring multiple in addition to inclusionary housing. And again, we're seeing this across the country. This really speaks to 40 years of trickle-down economics that hasn't worked for the common worker. And so, we need to push back on that aggressively.
Yes, I generally do agree with the inclusionary, the inclusionary housing ordinance that the current council is discussing. I guess what I would want to make sure is that the percentage of affordable units that the developers would be required to bring online with the new development actually is enough to have an economic impact on the broader housing market and actually stabilize costs. If they're only forced to add, say, 5% of their units as affordable housing, that's not really going to have enough of an economic impact to actually stabilize housing costs. I would like to see that percentage be closer to 30, 40%. I believe the average is about 10 to 15% across major cities. So, that would be my, my one kind of concern about the inclusionary housing ordinance. But overall, I guess I would just want to make sure that they're also adding enough housing generally, not just affordable housing. I do believe that if you just increase the supply of a product, that it will bring down the cost of that product. And that's been true since the beginning of time.
Yes, I've been following this inclusionary housing requirement that the city council's considering. And yeah, I generally agree with it. I think it's, it's a move that we need to make. However, no one's discussed the, what I like to call the loophole, that the city is allowing developers to pay a fee in order to avoid providing affordable housing. And this fee will go into a city fund that will later develop housing. But we need housing, affordable housing now. We needed it yesterday. So, I want to close this developer loophole, which incentivizes them not to include affordable housing. So, I think that needs to be worked out. And as, I get letters, like people write me all the time about how they're being evicted still, profit-based evictions still happen here in Long Beach. Even with the protections that were supposed to be provided by California Assembly Bill 1482, the property managers are just finding workarounds to still evict people. So, we need people to have stronger protections as renters here, so they don't get forced out by, by these profit-seeking corporations. And as, as far as new development goes, we've been talking about developers making all these new expensive condos and stuff. There's such a thing as nonprofit, not-for-profit residential development, and that's what we need to have in Long Beach. That will go greatly towards serving our affordable housing crisis, rather than expecting developers to be nice and provide a few units.
So, I grew up at the bottom of the economic ladder. My mom was a bartender, and we depended on government assistance, you know, to make ends meet. And I will always be an advocate for inclusionary housing. I just, like someone said here on the stage, it is a human right. And I believe that we are going to incentivize, you know, developers. I don't think it's a bad thing, whether they pay or they don't pay, but at least they pay into a fund that allows the city to build inclusionary housing to anyone that's coming in to the city.
So, I want to clarify some things for the audience at home. We've been talking about affordable housing, and affordable housing is like somebody like myself, who is working class, who has to work two jobs just to pay my rent, okay? So, here in Long Beach, the median right now to afford, in District 2, a one-bedroom is going for $1690, which means that you have to be making about $61,000 just to qualify for the apartment. Now, let's talk about how inclusionary housing works with that. And I actually believe that it was The Post who reported recently last month about the development on 7th and Pine. So, you have a developer that is charging about $2,200 for a studio, and I believe it was either 197 or 200 units, I can't remember. And they are under that tax break as affordable housing. So, then you ask yourself, well, how many units are they allocating for affordable housing? And it turned out it was only 11. Only 11 units, over 100 units. I even want to say that there was, I'm getting mixed up on my statistics, but I want to say that it was maybe even over 200, and that they were only allocating 11, and they are getting a huge tax break, saying that it is affordable housing. So, for me, it is incredibly important to be aggressive and say that this policy, 10% is not acceptable for inclusionary housing. LA is doing 10%, and we see the crisis that they are facing right now, still with homelessness. My time is up.
So, a different approach. No matter what, the rents are going to keep going up. It's going to be a battle where we keep fighting every year. Every other year, we're going to fight. So, instead of relying on government, instead of expecting government to make it, I believe in something else. I believe in better jobs, and I believe in education. For such a progressive, progressive city, we have one adult school for almost a population of 600,000 people. Two, we need better jobs. We have a lot of construction jobs coming over 90 projects. That's a few thousand jobs there. There's a lot of the population, like some of my friends and family, which didn't graduate high school, don't have a college degree. Some of them have been in jail. That's a lot of our population. So, why not get with the trades? Why not invest in more adult schools? Why not invest in the trades? So, actually have people afford to live here. So, instead of relying on the government every single year for them to fight and make the rent control, because no matter what, the rents are going to go up, and as we heard from Jeanette, it's only a few of the places that are going to actually be lower rent. Instead of doing that, instead of giving you the fish every year, why don't we teach people how to fish, so they can afford to live here? Nobody wants to go to Lancaster. Nobody wants to go to the deserts like Moreno Valley. We want to stay here. We want to stay in Long Beach. We want to stay home. So, instead of doing that, let's bring better jobs. Let's bring education. Let's bring back school buses, so we can actually go to better schools and not concentrate in one area. One more time, one adult school for 600,000 people, because now everybody went to college, and a lot of people want a second chance. Thank you.
The Queen Mary, Long Beach's icon, sits in the 2nd District, and The Post has reported on some of the numerous issues with repairs and the struggles with operator urban commons. In your opinion, has the city done enough to protect this icon? And what would you like to see happen with the Queen Mary? I'll start with you, Eduardo.
Well, I often say that the Queen Mary is quite the gem, and I celebrate that. I actually started this hashtag called #ThemQueens, which is Democrats chiming on the Democratic Presidential Debate with the moniker of the Queen Mary. And so, for me, I would like to protect it. I went to the State of the City fairly recently, that was about two weeks ago, and I heard our mayor talk about, in the history of the Queen Mary, we've realized now that a better approach might be transforming into some historical public treasure. And I want to see the details of that before I sign on board, but that really intrigued me in, in terms of how we best protect the Queen Mary. And needless to say, the Queen Mary is iconic, not just in our city, but across the world. When we think of Long Beach, we think of the Queen Mary. And I am not ready to give up on our queen, right? And I want to make sure that we really, you know, commit more research to figure out, how can we make this work? Is it going to be the public avenue? Or do we have, some of my comments, who can give us a report? I think a report is due in the next 30 to 60 days, to share for us, the public, what plans they have to try to preserve it. Once we comb through those plans, we want to make sure that everything lines up and see if our plan hopefully is solid. If not, I really want to talk to our mayor, you know, to see about this public idea that he has, which I think, again, intrigued me, but I want to see the details, because that might be a solution.
So, I think the expression goes, God save the queen, I think. I like the Queen Mary. It's one of our city's greatest economic assets, right? Along with the aquarium, a few other venues that we have here. I think that area probably deserves a little bit more development, not into something else, but something focused around the Queen Mary. I know, this was a while ago, and maybe it got shut down, but I know the, the Angels had talked about moving here. Maybe that shouldn't be right next to the Convention Center. Maybe there's room over by the Queen Mary to have a stadium or some new sports venue. And maybe that would bring enough revenue to that side of the waterfront in order to revitalize the Queen, revitalize the Queen Mary as a viable, as a viable option for, for entertainment, for tourism, for hotel stays. And that's kind of my general idea. I do like the Queen Mary. I do think it deserves to be saved, if it's economically reasonable, based on the reports that are still due to come out from the, from the city.
Yeah, I 100 support, 100% support keeping the Queen Mary here. It's very, a very special place to me. My wife and I were married on the Queen Mary. So, yeah, we can't see the Queen Mary go. And I've been following this story in the news for years. I've seen how, basically, it's been hard to make any profits off the Queen Mary, primarily due to its lack of upkeep, delayed, deferred maintenance, just a bunch of infrastructure that's really costly to, to replace or upkeep, is what's preventing the Queen Mary from actually being profitable. And it attracts plenty of visitors, so if they could get over this financial burden of the upkeep costs, and I'm willing to explore all ways to do it, private, public, but yes, I'm 100% the Queen Mary must stay.
So, I know right now, I'm, I'm upset when I, when I think about how it's fallen in disrepair. And I know that Urban Commons is in the process of, they're going to do an economic impact report to how, how the Queen Mary impacts our economy in the next 60 days. In the next 90 days, I think they are also going to do a preservation, historic preservation report that says what critical repairs need to be done, as well as what's going to happen to all the 40 acres around the Queen Mary. But I'm going to watch closely, because Laura Dowd is doing an audit, and I'm going to watch that closely, because I'm concerned, how is our money being spent? And is that money being spent on critical repairs? Because when I go on the Queen Mary, and I, you know, if you lean on the side, kind of the walls are falling in, the carpet, it just, it doesn't look like the Queen Mary I remember. So, I'm very concerned, and I'm going to be watching that very closely.
So, I actually have amazing memories as a little girl in the 80s, watching my mom get dressed up and attend parties at the Queen Mary and asking her if I can go. I feel like if you live in California or Southern California, you know of the Queen Mary, or you have a Queen Mary story. So, recently, this last year, I met with one of the nonprofits that is here to re, it's actually called To Restore the Queen, shout out to Mary. And, you know, I was really disappointed to hear how, in terms of restoration, it doesn't seem like it's important. It seems like it's more important to, for lack of a better words, exploit, you know, one of our icons here in California and make money off of it, but not take care of it. And I guess the question is, why is it that anywhere else, you know, when you think of the Statue of Liberty, other iconic statues or what have you, those are taken care of? So, I definitely agree that there needs to be another look in that. I have not met with the city. I have not met with the city, I haven't had an opportunity to gather information on their end to be able to make a clear, like, decision or take a side. But I will say that it is incredibly upsetting knowing that one of our, our California icons is not being taken care of properly.
You know, the last time the Queen Mary served in World War II, it was used to transport troops, go Navy to all my vets at home. But the queen is dead. I'm sorry, we have more major issues in our city than spending millions of dollars on a ship. Let it become privatized. Let it, it's a hotel. And let's be realistic, how many people at home watching this right now? Go and pay $20, $30 for parking to go there, $15 to $20 bucks to walk around the Queen Mary and take pictures and have a $60, $70 dinner. Let's be realistic, that's for the tourists, okay? It's not for us at home. We have so many issues. You know what? Instead of giving me millions for the Queen Mary, give me that money for the homeless. Give me that money for adult schools. Give me that money for jobs. Give it for training. Give it for school buses. You're telling me that a Queen Mary here, the boat, the queen is dead? It's more important than the people of our city? No, our, our people are more important. Our people are more important than the Queen Mary. And I will be the only person to say that up here. Why? Because I am here for the people, I'm not here for the Queen Mary. Thank you.
Well, I've known Mary Worr for a really long time with Restore the Queen and I'm a very big supporter. I'm on the Queen Mary every Wednesday, I'm a Rotarian and we meet there. So I know personally, the duct tape on the carpets, it's falling apart. The lining of the fire extinguisher cabinets is a mess. Zahroni was given this contract for 60 years, if I recall, and he had no restoration capability whatsoever. So we have a long-term lease here with the operator of the Queen Mary, Urban Commons. They were in breach of contract recently and the city's response was to throw more money at it. It occurs to me, from the moment I came to Long Beach 35 years ago, we've gone through operators like Joe Prevotell and none of them had restoration capability or expertise, no contracting capability. And that's what's going to have, have to happen to save the queen. We just fired the inspector that gave a damaging report about the queen. And frankly, I thought it was the same report that we've always gotten, except he said, "You've got about three years to, to take care of this issue or it's unsalvageable." And I can see that as I'm walking the queen, because sometimes on Wednesday, I'll go down and take a look at the underbelly of the ship and it's a wreck. So we have got to have a different contractor on that ship, a different operator. And I think that Laura Dowd's audit is going to be really important, but we can move forward with that.
The Elephant Lot, the huge parcel of land next to the convention center, one of the biggest open spaces of land left in the city, sits in the Second District. At one point, the city had a possible dream of putting an Angels stadium there. Well, it doesn't look like that's going to happen. But what, if anything, would you like to see on that huge space in your district? If you were, if you were to be elected? Nigel, we'll start with you.
And just to clarify, you'll have one minute to answer this particular question.
Okay. I don't think a new stadium should go in that lot. I think maybe the existing Wayland Center maybe ought to be revitalized as what it used to be. It used to be its own sports venue for a minor league hockey team. I think maybe we ought to revitalize that. Maybe Cal State Long Beach basketball and volleyball teams can start playing there instead of at the Pyramid. That would bring more economic activity into the downtown core, into District Two. That would be my first kind of idea. The second idea is to just kind of use the lot for what it is. I mean, it provides parking for special events that occur over on the waterfront. And, you know, the Angels stadium thing didn't work out, but I believe probably a smaller venue like that would be more appropriate for the space.
Yeah, I agree with Nigel on this issue, his latter point of view. I've never seen it as a problem. I've never seen it as an area that needs, that's the need of development. It seems like it's doing quite fine. And I, I'm not sure what the issue is of just leaving it as a parking space for the many events that occur down in that area. There's plenty of events down there year-round.
So that lot is part of the Coastal Commission, it's a tidings fund. So you're a little bit restricted on what you can do there. But I think it's a huge opportunity. And I know right now, the city is going through a visionary process. And I think having Anaheim Angels look at that lot got everyone excited about opportunities that could happen there. So I look forward to seeing what happens through that visionary process. One of the things I can tell you, I also live downtown and we have to make sure, whatever that is, that we are preserving, you know, the views that are already there, that people have bought there and invested there. And that it has community input and it has a community benefit. So that visionary process should finish this year, so I look forward to seeing what comes out of that.
So I have my own personal beliefs about the lot. It kind of goes in sync with what Ryan's saying. I'm not sure why we need to build on it. But I also did speak with the Downtown Long Beach Allegiance and we had a conversation about, I mean, if somebody was to come with me, I haven't really gotten so much information or ideas to just really be able to have a strong sense or to give a clear answer on yes or no. I'm okay with it staying the way it is, but I'm also open to hearing other ideas. But just, just know, just for clarity, I was not in favor of a stadium there, absolutely not.
Again, I'm here for the people. Stadium, parking lot, shopping center, no. We need something for the people. How about a multipurpose area that serves the people? We have a job training center, we can actually build a second adult school that we really need here. Three, we can have daycare centers, something that we need. City-funded daycare centers for all the single mothers at home or for the parents that have, that need daycare centers. A dog park. I live right here on Ocean and Pine. It is really difficult for the people that have dogs or whatnot or pets. So how about a dog park? How about also a safe place for the kids in after-school program? So instead of having a stadium and everything else, let's give it back to the people. Let's give it back to the people. Thank you.
Great. Well, I was opposed to the arena on a whole different basis. The city is talking about climate change and I am a true believer in that. I had a conversation with Amy Bodek, our former Director of Development privately. And I had brought articles from Europe that said we were going to have a five-foot rise in sea levels by 2,100. Amy looked up from her computer for the first time and said to me, "It's going to be nine feet." I don't think I've known anybody quite as knowledgeable as Amy Bodek. We were certainly opponents in the land use element, but I've never denigrated the fact that the woman is brilliant. And now she's working in Los Angeles. Why are we even thinking of building on land that is a foot and a half above ocean level? Do you have a lifespan of 15 years? They predict in 15 years, we may have a 30-inch level rise in the oceans, which sort of questions, why are we building Belmont Pool? $85 million into a project that has a 15-year lifespan. We have to be pragmatic here. P.S., we have two major events that use that parking lot, the Grand Prix and the gay parade.
I'm also familiar with some of the data that Robert mentioned in terms of the rising tides. But we also have technology engineers, so forth and so on, that can help us with mitigating some of these rising levels and potentially, on that particular end, explore it as an area that makes a good fit for Long Beach. First of all, regardless of what is built there, we want to make sure that traffic isn't congested. We want to make sure it accounts for enough parking. We also want to make sure that the noise levels are down, especially for the residents of there. So all that needs to be consideration. And there's, needs to be sufficient community input regardless of what is built. Now in terms of what I am open to, affordable housing, right? Affordable housing can go there. What else am I open to? I really like this idea of minor leagues coming in there, right? If minor leagues, I think, creates a better fit for the city of Long Beach and in terms of our identity, in terms of who we are, if a team is willing to move there with community benefit agreements. Making sure that the workers that are put to, on that project are actually hired locally within the city of Long Beach. And we can build that in with the policies that the city council moves in, regardless of what project is there. And one more idea that I can pitch. I will pitch it later.
This last one is going to be one minute each for questions as well. Measure on the March ballot, I would make Measure A sales tax permanent. Do you support this extension for the city's sales tax? And if so, why? And we'll start with you, Ryan.
Yeah, I remember when that, when Measure A was being pitched to us several years back as a temporary tax. And it was a quite long temporary tax. If I remember the data right, a 10-year tax in a six-year and four-year interval, the tax rate goes down after six years. So I kind of find it a little disingenuous now that it's trying, they're repackaging it as a, as a permanent tax. And I'm not saying Measure A is bad. I'm just not sure why they've changed the marketing on it when it seemed like a really good idea to solve some immediate problems right now. And I would like to see an increased transparency with Measure A because it was pitched to us, that we'll get more libraries open and go to schools and more police on the street and fixing potholes, which I'm all for. But then, once you start reading about where the money is actually going, it's not things that you and I see, you know, to better our lives. Like say, I'm not saying this is bad, but police pensions, which are fine, but I don't believe that's where Measure A should be going towards.
Yes, I am supportive of Measure A. It's, it's critical for our infrastructure. Also, you know, just don't know if you guys were watching the news, there was a big high-rise fire in LA, 24 floors. And we have to make sure, especially with our fire department, I was at a high-rise fire drill and how much equipment it takes. And when you, when you think about downtown Long Beach and how high those apartment buildings are, that we have the, the equipment and the personnel in case we should ever need them. Also, when you look at Measure A, the streets, the parks, the libraries, all the things that have happened with Measure A. And I know there's a lot of repairs that still need to happen in our district. So I'm very much in support of that.
So I am not in support of Measure A. I believe that the language that was used when they proposed it to us was for a rainy day fund. As Robert mentioned, we have one of the highest taxes in the country. In the, in the state of California, I think we're one of the five cities that are paying the most to the limit, thank God. And also, another thing to talk about, when we talk about the general fund, over 70% of the general fund, or I believe it's 70 cents for every dollar, goes to the police department and negotiation for their budgets. So for those reasons, I'm not in favor of Measure A. I believe our city tax is way too high. And we've already been doing it for a few years. They had four years to figure it out. And if they haven't been able to allocate or manage the funding correctly now, then I don't think we should give them another four or more.
Simple, no more taxes. We're tired of taxes. We get taxed for every single little thing. Like I say, I'm here for the people. If you want to tax somebody, why don't you tax those corporations coming in? Why don't you tax those large construction projects coming in? Stop taxing our people, stop taxing my people. I, I don't believe in that. As a conservative, I believe in small taxes or no taxes. So once again, let's, let's stop making our people pay for everything. It shouldn't be that way. Why, why are our people suffering? You know, that extra money, we can spend it on food, on gas, on getting to work, on paying the rent. On paying necessities that parents at home don't have. So why are we supposed to pay for that? No more taxes.
I am in opposition to Proposition A. It was sold to us as temporary only. We've passed three different taxes on the same basis, that we're going to restore the pre-recession levels of the police department. And we haven't done that in three taxes. Why do I expect that they would do it sometime in the future? The fact is, if you look at the line-eyed budget of the police department, they put all that money that was supposed to go for officers in something called Maintenance Fund. That's really interesting to me. Also, we have to really take a look at our budget here and use it. This is a short-term fix, 10.25%. It's a job killer. If we're going to change this city, 88, not 77%, of our people work outside the city. And we have, that means 12% jobs, that's all we have. So this tax would subvert the idea of bringing new jobs and new businesses into the city. So I oppose it.
My concern is with firefighters, infrastructure, and making sure that they have what is needed to make this city vibrant. Having said that, I'm more in favor of creating other lines of revenue to ensure that those support is needed. So we do need money, we do need to fund that because we don't want to compromise public safety. That's a concern. But I'm more of a progressive, if we're going to tax, we need more progressive forms of taxing as opposed to regressive forms of taxing. So I am concerned. I am concerned about, you know, Measure A and making it permanent without exploring other lines of revenue that can replace some of the needs that our, that our city has, especially with the cost being so high in this particular city.
So I voted against Measure A the first time. And I think we've kind of been painted into a corner here to vote for it this time. Let me explain. If we vote against Measure A and reduce our sales tax back to 9.25%, the LA County Board of Supervisors is within their rights to increase our tax back to 10.25% and the LA County will get that revenue. There's no guarantee that that revenue will come to the city of Long Beach. If we vote to keep Measure A, make it permanent, at least that money will now stay in the city of Long Beach. Like I said, I don't necessarily like the increased sales tax, but in order for the benefit, for the benefit of the city, I think we have to vote for it this time.
Okay, so we'll head into the individual questions. And we'll be a little more flexible with the time. Some of the questions that we have for you probably won't take a minute and a half or a minute, but we want to be able to have a dialogue and give you guys enough time to actually answer the question. So we'll start with a minute and see how that goes. But like I said, some of these won't require the entire time. I actually want to, I'm going to jump around a little bit. I actually will start with Jesus. Just to clarify something you said about the Queen Mary. So the city doesn't actually spend general fund revenue on repairs? The repairs are the responsibility of the leaseholder, Urban Commons. The city did float a bond to help pay upfront for some of the emergency repairs. But, but I just want to clarify, are you saying that the city should sell the Queen Mary? Is, was that what you were suggesting?
What I'm saying is that, A, it should stay privatized and stay away from the city.
It's not private now, though.
I understand that.
Okay.
Meaning this, I know we're doing bonds as well. But I just want it to stay private. I don't want any money from our city paying for the Queen Mary. I, I do respect what the Queen Mary has done for us. I know it's iconic. I've been there myself, I do enjoy it, the two, three times I've been there for the years and years.
So what do you mean by privatize it, though?
I just don't want any of our money whatsoever going to the Queen Mary.
It doesn't.
Not even bonds whatsoever. I, I don't appreciate any of our money going there. So that's what I mean.
Okay. And we'll come back to Cindy. So, so you're a retired police officer, as is your husband. One of the city's biggest budgetary issues facing a lot of cities is pension costs. Would you consider your service in the police department a conflict of interest? And would you be able to vote with the city's best interests in mind when it comes to this issue?
No, I don't, I don't find it to be a conflict. Listen, I, even when I, as a benefit of the retirement system, I knew that there had to be some changes. And I think that I was supportive of our union when they stepped up and negotiated some of those pension changes because in some ways, it was just unsustainable. And so everyone had to step up. So I don't, I'm always going to be, you know, obviously as a public safety person, I appreciate all of the work that police and fire do for us, but at the same time, we need to make sure that everything's sustainable for the city as well.
And we have a question for Jeanette. So on your campaign website and in your podcast discussion with Palacio Magazine, you, you outline the problem of homelessness very well. But we haven't heard very many concrete solutions. If you, if you could sum up and be very concrete, what specifically do you propose doing for the homeless in Long Beach?
Okay, so just a side note, did you go on my website? Because I know it's, did you click the little icons?
Yes.
Okay. And, and still you, you didn't feel that I had enough information up there on my solutions?
Specifically, how would you pay for these ideas? What, what specifically do you?
Yeah, no problem.
What specifically do you, are you proposing?
Yeah, no problem. I'll lay it out for you and then also the audience at home. So again, within my work of mental health here and social work as well for the city, I feel that inclusionary housing, and I talked about it a little bit in the beginning of, in the forum, right, where I said, we need to stop a funnel of people continuing to end up on the streets, right? And for me, that's why I also talked about housing and why it's so crucial that we implement policies to keep people in their homes.
But what policies?
Inclusionary housing is one of them. Bridge housing is another, and supportive housing. And so the way that's going to work is that we need to work with partnerships and different collaborations with other nonprofits, agencies, and purchasing land.
Like which ones?
So, which...
Like which organizations? Be very specific.
Well, I mean, we already, I feel like the city and the nonprofits, like Long Beach Rescue Mission, the Women's Shelter, you know, the Guidance Center, all these different Mental Health America, all these different nonprofits, they already are assisting different mental health services and offer shelter, right? And what I, and I also believe, as somebody who's been out there on the streets, working out thousands of hours, I believe that we have great resources. I believe that we have...
Your time is up. I just want to get to concrete ideas, like concrete, what would you do? Give me an example of an agenda item you would bring to council. Like specifically, what would you propose before council?
I'm going to go back to housing. We have to close that gap of getting people to stop ending up on the streets just because they end up down on their luck. We have to stop the high rents. Younger people cannot afford these expensive types of rents. And also, when you talk about supportive housing or bridge housing, the city purchasing land and then building on that and making it accessible for people who are really struggling in this city.
Okay, thank you. So other of you have been vague as well about some of your proposals. Jeanette's not there, you know, which I get during a campaign, you're kind of outlining who you are and what you believe in. So I want to go, who am I going to go to? Nigel. So you have said that you want to expand homeless outreach, social services, and homeless shelter facilities. How specifically would you pay for that? Because all those things sound great, but how do we bring that to fruition?
So I think we can find the money in the existing budget. You mentioned lowering pension costs, and I know that's currently an unfunded liability that wouldn't necessarily free up money toward it. But an issue like that, where maybe there's some overstaffing in certain offices, maybe we could just, you know, cut costs by, say, a half a percentage point across every other department in the city and reallocate that half a percent across every department towards a homeless shelter, towards more outreach staff, towards more social services.
So on homeless shelters, where is this homeless shelter going to be built? Because that's always the question. No one wants it.
So I know in District Nine, there is currently one that's been approved that will be built. I think there is likely space on the West Side. I know where that's, the seasonal shelter that's open in the wintertime, I believe we could probably find the funds to make that year-round permanent rather than just temporary seasonal.
So North Long Beach and West Long Beach?
I'm not necessarily against having one in my neighborhood. I mean, I've been homeless. I don't necessarily have a problem with the homeless people in my neighborhood. I think probably one thing that would be more impactful would just to be, to destigmatize homelessness, maybe humanize the issue a little bit more, so that people are maybe a little bit more, you know, empathetic to the plight of the homeless community.
And how would you pay for that? Pay for services?
Like I said, either find the money in the budget. So here's an idea. We're probably going to increase the hotel tax, right? I know a lot of that money is earmarked toward the general fund, and another part of it is going towards arts and conventions, I believe. Maybe that money, that's that, you know, that segment of money that's going toward the general fund, maybe we should use that towards some of these services that I vaguely mentioned.
Yeah. I believe all the money is actually going to the convention center and the arts.
It's all, right? So maybe some of that, maybe not all of it needs to go towards that. Maybe some of that should go towards...
Some new taxes.
Well, it's already going to be a new tax that will likely pass for better or worse.
Let's go to Robert. So you own several properties in the Second District. The city council votes on issues that could benefit or harm your income as a landlord, including things like inclusionary housing or other housing policies. Do you see this as a conflict of interest, and would you recuse yourself on some of these issues?
I generally don't see it as a conflict of interest. I'm one of those peculiar people that don't raise the rent. I like landlords, like mom and pops, that want long-term, stable tenants. This was my retirement plan because I didn't get a pension. And we have to understand that a lot of people in Long Beach are in that same situation that I'm in. Policy is policy. If it came down to specific things, I'm not included in rent control because I own single units. So the policies that we're talking about wouldn't affect my property at all anyway. But I think it takes wisdom to address these things, and I certainly, as a broker, know a great deal about housing. As a contractor, I know a great deal about housing. And I think that we need to bring that institutional memory to bear.
And you also own several properties in Hawaii as well, correct?
Correct.
And how much time do you spend in Hawaii versus Long Beach?
Well, I used to spend quite a bit of time in Honolulu. I tried to retire, actually, in 2005. Sold my cleaning company. I started that with $50 with a Comet Cleanser and Windex, and by the time I was done, it was the biggest company in the city for cleaning. I haven't been to Honolulu except one week at Christmas time because my friends expect to have a Christmas dinner. As a councilperson, obviously, you're going to have to restrict yourself in terms of when you can leave. Everybody takes a vacation. It's nice that I own the house there. Eventually, since I'm not a career politician, that will be my retirement home, and that was the plan all along.
But you spend the majority of your time here in Long Beach?
Ninety-nine percent of the time.
All right, we'll move to Eduardo. You mentioned tonight that one of your ideas for the parking issues was to bring jobs here, which is nice. Everybody wants jobs, well-paying jobs here. But the city council has only limited power over bringing jobs here, which sounds good. What, how specifically are you going to bring well-paying jobs to the district?
It's a really good question. So one of the things that we do in city council is use the power of that seat to also lobby at the state level. And right now is probably not the best time because who's the president in office is not very favorable to Californians. But with the hope of a change in president and change in the overall tone of federal government, is using lobbying for better policies both at the state and federal level. And on top of that, you also want to make sure that you continue to create a city that is attractive to employers, right, that can come in. And what we can't forget is generating jobs with the residents that we have here. We have several entrepreneurship programs. I was part of one a couple of years ago with the Downtown Long Beach Associates in Cal State Long Beach that shows residents how to create our own jobs and also, over the course of a long term, also create jobs for employees. When you actually create education programs...
So more on an advocacy level, then?
Yeah, and you can create the atmosphere for people to actually create jobs in their own communities. It could be coffee shops, I know we have a lot of them, but I think that...
What would be an example of a council action or agenda item that you could bring forward on this topic?
Sure. So there's a program right now, I think it's called the Gateway Jobs Program, that might not be the exact title. And what it is, is it creates internships for youth to work in select businesses in the area. I think that's a phenomenal program at the hyper-local level, so it's really the immediate downtown area. We could extend programs like that across the city to ensure that our own youth have access to well-paying, you know, jobs and internships and opportunities for them to further the opportunities and down the road.
Supporting Pacific Gateway.
Right. You have to think kind of the long-term picture, you know, and plant seeds early on so that down the road, some of these seeds grow into opportunities and jobs and businesses.
So Ryan, I'm going to go, you've mentioned tonight and in your promotional materials for your campaign, your YouTube channel.
Yes.
Are you running to promote your YouTube channel? How much?
No. No, this has brought no additional attention to my YouTube channel. I'm not doing it for that purpose. No, it's actually the other way around. My YouTube channel, my work on my YouTube channel, my activism on my YouTube channel led me to wake up every day and ask myself, what more can I do to fight this, the largest existential crisis that's facing our planet, all life on our planet? And that led me to run for city council.
But city council members are very limited in what they can do.
Uh-huh. That's what I thought at first, too.
So what specifically, what would be an example of an agenda item you would bring forward?
How much time do I have?
Well, give me something concrete, though.
I have many concrete actions. First of all, I know right now, our current representative is proposing that we move to a community energy, that we get our energy from a completely renewable greenhouse gas-free source, such as Culver City's done this, Berkeley's done this. So if that motion, if that agenda, and it hasn't been passed, I will champion that when I take office. Another one is to replace our aging fleet of city vehicles with renewable energy vehicles.
And how would you pay for that?
I mean, the same way a new fossil fuel internal combustion engine vehicle gets bought, same cash. In fact, over the long term, it'll cost the city less. Maintenance is almost nothing for an electric vehicle, and we can fuel it for free with solar energy that we generate here.
Okay.
Can I go on?
No, that's fine.
Okay, because I have all day on this one.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, let's go back to Cindy. So we just, we've been scouring campaign finance forums today. They just, the newest ones just came out. Almost half of your donations came from people outside of Long Beach. How much should outside interests influence the local campaign for the Second District?
Well, so I did not know that, so I have to, but I can tell you, I had a lot of family that live outside of the area. Fortunately, a lot of my family had to move because it was just too expensive to live here, and I come from a, I'm the first one in my entire family that even graduated from high school. So it was, this was just really tough. So I have a lot of family back in Kentucky, so I'm sure you saw a lot of my family and friends from back there who have donated to my campaign. And as far as other interests, I'm not really sure.
It was quite a few, it was like 119 from outside Long Beach.
So is it, was it outside the state or outside of...
Outside the city, so Orange County, a lot in Orange County, and then some in Kentucky, but it was regional, but outside the state as well, about, yeah, over 100 donors.
And I can see that. I have been very active. I have been part of the Women's President Org. I've been active in United Eagle College Fund, and I have friends that are all over. I just, you know, I've had the benefit of really serving in a lot of different ways. And so I'm not surprised that there are people that are outside the city just because of organizations that I've been involved in.
And I have another question for you as well about, you're friends with the mayor, and you have the endorsement of the mayor and several council members. How, name one thing that you differ from the mayor on in terms of policy.
Well, I think that our, what I differ on is the Broadway diet. I know he, I think he likes it, and I just, I just think it was absolutely horrible idea. And then also, you know, I think inclusionary housing, I'm going to go back to that. That should have been in the original downtown plan from day one, and I disagree that it wasn't.
Okay. What else do you differ with the mayor on? Would you say?
I would say that, you know, that's probably the main things, I mean, so far. I mean, I'm not afraid, I'm an independent person, and I haven't, I never thought that I would be involved in politics. And we were friends, and regardless, we were just friends, like, you know, we didn't talk about politics all the time. But I'm an independent woman, and I am not afraid to stand up for what I believe in. And you can be, rest assured that if there's, I'm going to fight for what's right for my district, what's right for our community. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to always agree, but I will stand up what I believe is right.
So Jeanette, you are employed in social work. How specifically have you been involved in the district beyond your employment? So have you been involved in organizations? What, how have you been ingrained in the Second District outside of your job?
Okay. So I worked for a crisis unit, and it is, we were first responders, and it is a very grueling schedule. So, I mean, in terms of outside my job, I mean, I volunteered and I do, like, social media marketing for a nonprofit for human trafficking out of San Pedro. So, I mean, I do protest and assist that nonprofit regularly. I do assist and help nonprofits out in LA in terms of working with the homeless population, volunteering. However, in terms of being, like, politically connected or attending, you know, fancy city events or knowing anybody at City Hall, you probably hadn't seen me unless you or family was in crisis or unless you needed housing or you needed a ride to a shelter. That's basically all the involvement in terms of the community. But I mean, and I don't want to say basically all because I feel like that's ground zero. As a first responder, that is ground zero, and it is one of the most important type of community work that anybody can choose for a career path.
Do you attend city council meetings?
I do. I do, absolutely, yeah. I have attended city council meetings prior.
Have there been any issues that you've been involved in locally?
I'm trying to think, which one was it? I know, like, maybe a year, what was it, like, maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago, about the, no, it was about a year ago. I mean, just in terms of, like, rent control, going, attending. But again, like, in terms of me being politically connected or involved in any, like, popular Democratic parties and groups, no. I've always just kind of volunteered my time off, again, for things that really goes inside of my work, right?
Jesus, so you, correct me if I'm wrong, because I may be wrong, but we could not find a, you didn't file a campaign statement with the city clerk?
No, ma'am.
You don't appear to have a website or a Facebook page.
No, ma'am.
So I'm wondering, are you, are you serious? I mean, those are kind of basics that you sort of need to get your message out.
Am I serious? I am here.
Yeah.
So yes, I'm serious. I'm doing the grassroots. I go door knocking a lot. Not everybody has access to the internet. Not everybody goes online every single day.
It's a pretty powerful way, though, to get your, in this day and age.
I believe in a different strategy, which is door knocking every single day. You know, I work nights, I come home, I take a few naps, and I go door knocking. I like to meet people face to face. Not everybody, once again, is on the internet. Not everybody is a millennial. We have a large population here that they don't even have iPhones or smartphones. Those are the people that I want to serve. Those are the people that I go after. So yes, I am serious. So for you to say that I'm not serious just because I'm not on social media or have a website, yeah, I don't think that's right.
You're also...
I'm just doing a different type of campaigning.
And you're also the lone brave Republican, I believe, on this stage.
I'm a proud Republican.
And that's very out of sync with the political leanings of the district.
It's really not, because once you actually get down to it and you talk to people, when I'm out there, they have a lot of the same views. It's just we're in a state where now people can't express their views because of certain times they get attacked. For example, I have, personally, my truck, it has been slashed. I have had my windows broken. And why? Why do we now live in a country that that's going on? It's not right. So for you to say, because I'm a Republican, because I'm not like everybody else, I don't want to be like everybody else. That's not me. I want to serve the people. If you listen to my ideas, they have been totally different. But at the end, it's about the people. Don't see me as a Republican, see me as somebody that cares for the people.
Okay, and I should add, this is not a partisan race, but...
But you may be partisan.
Well, it does shape your, and you've spoken out, you've mentioned that several times tonight.
Yes, I'm a proud Republican. Yes, ma'am.
So, okay. Yeah, so Robert. So you described the Broadway corridor as death row.
Yes.
Do you feel you're stoking fear in the community with this issue? It's been your issue. But I'm wondering about that, that language. But I'm wondering about that, that language. I feel the description's a little overblown, possibly, or?
I'm sorry. I live on Broadway. I've lived on Broadway since 1992. It was not my intention to run for council, I was going to retire. The Broadway corridor was the last straw for me. I watched this city go from very inclusive government, where everybody listened to everybody, and we never made any infrastructure improvements until we'd gone to the community. We did two years and more of visioning process on Broadway, and not one thing that we talked about was done. Not one. The traffic engineer sent me an email six weeks ago saying, well, you know what, we don't have to listen to you anyway. What arrogance.
But as far as the language, death row?
Okay, the language is here. The problem is that the city is not even reporting, and the police depart, department are not reporting what actually is happening on Broadway.
How many people have died, though, since the changes have been made?
Seven days ago, we had a 14-year-old girl run over. She's in critical condition in the hospital, I'm not sure what her condition is, of course, because of HIPAA rules. We've had over 185 accidents. I've lived on Broadway since 92. In the first month, we had more accidents on, serious accidents, head-on collisions, T-bones. Coming out of the Rite Aid parking lot is absolute hell. I mean, semi-trailer trucks smashing into cars. There is no line of sight on Broadway. So when I was expressing myself on this, I was saying, here's the danger. The first job of government is the safeguard of its people. That's the first job. Whether we're talking about the army, or the police, or the firefighters, when they did this construction on Broadway, they put my people at risk, our people at risk. This whole city avoids Broadway now, because it's so dangerous. It's not because there's not parking.
But as far as, I mean, the language that you've used has been very.
You're, you're thinking I'm using too much hyperbole?
Well, I'm talking about stoking, you know, it's one thing to, to be vocal about an issue, but the language?
Well, I think the passion that we have on Broadway as business association and as a residence association is pretty fierce. And yes, my language is strong. I think partly because we tried desperately to have Janine Pierce listen to us. We contacted the council office. I had meetings with the traffic engineer when Eric Wiedstrand was still here, at 2:00, and then at 5:00 he resigned. So we did everything we could, and it's frustrating, when you're trying to deal with a city that won't listen to you anymore, yes, you get a little bit agitated.
You've said, your, your numbers of accident rates have differed wildly from the cities. How, how are you guys tallying and counting these accident rates?
We had to do it ourselves, actually. We had an accident, a really big one, on the corner of Kenebeck and Broadway on May 26th. Seven police cars were there. So I called Commander O'Dowd, who's a good friend, and I said, you know, do you have the record of that? And the answer was, well, that's probably in next month's reporting. So I waited for next month to see if it was reported. No, in fact, it wasn't. We ended up having to do affidavits all along the corridor of people who actually saw accidents, and we tabulated that, we gave it to the city, we gave it to the council member, we gave it to the traffic engineer, we gave it to the mayor. No response. So we did a tremendous amount of work making sure that we weren't duplicating the, the data on Broadway. So yes, this is a tremendous amount of time. I've walked that corridor since the Broadway Diet, probably 20 times, door to door.
I'm going to cut you off, because we got to, it's 7:30, and I, last of the individual questions, Eduardo, you've been, you have support from Janine Pierce, who's the incumbent. Did she, did she enlist you to run?
No, that decision was mine, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that the decision, it was really a joint decision with my husband, Galvencio, who's in the audience today. I had a long, I've run before, I ran for school board unsuccessfully. And when Councilwoman Janine Pierce decided not to run for reelection, I, we put a lot of thought, you know, over the weekend and figured, and this was, and I don't think it's any surprise, putting a campaign together on a weekend is, is, is tough, but that speaks to my ability to bring folks together, organize, and hit the ground running with a strong campaign.
So your decision was independent, it wasn't?
Yeah, it was independent.
Okay, okay. So, now we're going to try something. And I've, we're going to allow each candidate to ask one question of one of their, one of the people on the stage. And I've asked each to refrain from any personal attacks, we want to keep this along policy issues or, or other issues that you see as problematic. But you'll have one question, the person who's asked the question will have, what, a minute, a minute to respond. So we will start with Jeanette. And you don't have to either, if you don't want to, it's, that's fine.
Can I give a little, like, context before I ask my question?
Sure.
So as you mentioned, the forms are up, our new financial forms are up, our 700 forms are up, and in full transparency and just being honest, like, let's be honest, what is the reasons for so many candidates on the stage, and what are the intentions of gaining that seat? So in full transparency, I am going to publish my 700 form after this debate or this forum on my social media.
Okay.
And, you know.
What is your question?
And I challenge, I challenge Cindy, will you do the same in, in publishing your 700 form?
I don't have, I, I'm not really familiar what, when these are, I think they all have to be published, and they're all public, so I don't think there's a problem when it, whenever the timeline is for it going public, I have already filled it out. I have submitted my 700 form to the city, I've complied with all of the requirements that have been asking me, and so.
They are, they are public record.
Yeah, they are public record.
Would you publish it on your website?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, but aren't they public already on the?
They are public.
Yeah, so they're already public, so.
You have to request them from the city clerk. I mean.
You don't have to request, you can find them online, but they're.
They're already online.
They're not online yet.
They are not uploaded yet.
Well, we, they're due Friday, so they should be.
Okay, well, I'm sure that they're going to be uploaded, and you are welcome to look at that as soon as you, as soon as it's uploaded, I think it's Friday.
So will you publish it on your social media or your website?
No, I, anyone who wants to look at the 700 form, it's available to everyone, all you have to do is go to longbeach.gov, and you can, you can see it. I think all of my campaign contributions, everything is there, so.
Yeah, there is a portal on the city clerk's site where you can find campaign finance documents that are actually kept by the state, so. We'll do a good job of publicizing how to find them as well.
Laura, Laura, do you believe it helps you, or it hurts you, that you're so aligned with Janine Pierce after what she's done for our district?
Councilwoman Janine Pierce has been a strong progressive and advocate for workers in our city. With me, you will have a strong progressive, someone who knows the work, someone who can speak for its policy, someone who can champion the workers in our city, and also champion our strong middle class to ensure that you're, to maintain ourselves in the, in the middle class. Over 70, no, 66%, if I remember correctly, of our district are renters. Enough is enough, okay? Our rent is too damn high, and we need to make sure that we continue policies so that our strong city, made up of everyday human beings, like the rich diversity that we have in this room, is maintained in the beautiful city of Long Beach. So yes, I will continue the progressive values that our councilwoman, there's a reason she endorsed me. She knows that I stand strong, and I never waver as a progressive Democrat, and I've been a Democrat since the age of 18.
And Robert.
Cindy and I have become friends in this campaign, which is wonderful, you know, that you get to know people, and they're just good people. So here's a question that I have, because it's a financial one. The police department is working on overtime significantly. The highest-paid employee in the entire city of Long Beach is not the mayor, not the city manager, not the fire chief, not the police chief, it's a battalion chief making $402,417, when he combines his regular pay with overtime. The question here is, as a former police officer, are you in favor of continuing the overtime of the old guard of the police department? Or will you support hiring new police officers and new academies so that we do not have this extraordinary overcharge?
And that's, so I'll go ahead, Robert, that's a great question, and so I'm absolutely in support of that. You know, we did, we, our numbers are down, like you mentioned earlier, Robert, and, and I, we're never going to get back to where we are, but that's why I think it's important that Measure A passes, because you're right, I would much prefer to pay someone doing the job and get them trained and get them out instead of paying them overtime. So I would absolutely be in support of, of more hiring in those, in those areas.
So I, you know, one of the, one of the joys of campaigning so far along my fellow candidates, getting to know one another and really, you know, forging strong relationships, I think, with one another. But questions do come up as we see each other and, and debate and learn more. So my question is also for Cindy. And so I'm big on criminal justice reform, I don't think that's a secret to anyone who knows me. I'm a professor, I teach social movements, I teach about Black Lives Matter, I teach about.
Okay, you know what, we're going to ask the audience to refrain from applauding, we're almost there.
So my question is, in your, how would you chime in with criminal justice reform? And what are some specific, specific ideas in terms of transparency with the police, making sure that we have no more issues with things like tiger texts, making sure that, you know, we, we bolster community relations with the police, so I kind of want to know more about that.
So I appreciate that question, and I can tell you this, that, 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 I would want to work closely with you. Should I make this far? I want to tell you, I became a police officer because I, when I was serving in the most underserved communities, I saw crimes weren't reported, undocumented citizens were afraid to call the police, even people that were victimized didn't call the police. I currently have one of my own family members that's on the list to be deported over marijuana. I understand that there is, we have some work to do, and I'm not in denial about it. I can only speak to me and my character, when I worked here, when I became a police officer, I decided to serve in this area. I didn't go to East Long Beach, I didn't go, I stayed right here where I'm from, and I served my community, I'm very proud of that. But I also understand that we have some work to do, and I already talk about transparency, and that we have to work on that, because our community wants that, we need that, I want that. So you would have my full support, and, and working hand in hand, and then also working with the police department.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy, I'll give you a break. So Eduardo, you know, Eduardo, you've kind of become a friend of mine, honestly, I'll really try to.
True. And I've had a question I've actually wanted to ask you privately, but I'll ask you publicly. In your, I guess your tenure as a professor at Cal State Long Beach, what would you say are the biggest challenges that students are facing once they graduate? Like, what, I guess, and maybe, let me ask it a different way, sorry. What would they like to do after they graduate, and what, if anything, is preventing them from doing that?
Networks, so, and here's why I say networks. Many students go into colleges and universities with the belief that, you know, as soon as they graduate, they're going to land a well-paying job. Nothing can be further from the truth in this particular economy. One thing that I know from both experience and, you know, teaching, is that what often separates those that get well-paying jobs are connections, networks, that the political economic elite in this country have, and basically hand over to members of the same political economic elite. And so many of my students that come to college, college, you know, they graduate, and they have a good degree, have straight A's, they're left, and, okay, where's a good-paying job? Right? So I come in and say, you have to make connections, you have to network with people, you have to have mentors, you have to have wraparound services, really, in order for you to make it in this particular economy. And as folks that are running for office.
And that's all, sorry, your time's up. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, well.
I'd like to continue with your line of questioning that you gave of Robert about hyperbole, about the dangers of the Broadway Road Diet. I mean, I, I made a YouTube video that a lot of you guys may have seen, where I went point by point, going through, using Robert's own words, how he described how it's so now dangerous and, and difficult to pull out onto Broadway. And I showed point by point how none of, any, anything he said made any sense. You still have, even with a bike lane or no bike lane, you still have to nose your way out into traffic, look both ways, make sure it's okay to turn right. I see no danger in pulling out where there's a bike lane. So let me ask you this, Robert, and you touched upon this earlier, I just would like a yes or no answer on this, too, if you don't mind, that there's the police data that we can get to see if there has truly been an increase in, in accidents on Broadway. So we have the before Road Diet data, and we have the after Road Diet data, and Robert's been claiming that there's this giant increase on Death Alley, or whatever it's called. So I want to know, Robert, did you, yes or no, did you do this? Did you, to make your claim that there's this increase in accidents, did you take the old police data, compare that with the new police data? But that would have been a, a valid statistical comparison, but you did.
I'm going to have to ask you to state your question.
Anecdotal reports and said, did you, anyone see an accident? If so, please let me know.
Ryan, can you state your question clearly?
Oh, yeah. Basically, did you make a comparison using one set of data, police data, and your data after the Road Diet is police data plus anecdotal reports? Because that's not a valid comparison, because the old police data from before the Road Diet does not include any anecdotal reports. So your data is inflated and pretty much statistically invalid.
So how reliable would the data be?
Thank you, Ryan. I'm very careful before I make claims. When the Road Diet first happened, I didn't really mind, because I have a driveway, I can back, it's always been difficult to back out of Broadway. However, I'm on Temple and Broadway, and the first two accidents, I thought, oh, well, you know, people have accidents on Temple and Broadway, you always do on every cross street. When it came to about five accidents, I thought, wow, that's really unusual. Did I look for the data for the police department? Yes, in fact, I did, I did public records requests, and I went back almost 20 years, because I've been president of Broadway for, since 1992, that's rather a long time, and living on the street, I knew what it looked like in terms of, of calls for service. Unfortunately, and I hate to accuse the police department, but here's the problem, I could not find data that matched what our experience was. So we made a concerted effort to make photographic summaries of each accident that happened. After a while, it just became so much that we couldn't do it continually.
Thank you, and Cindy?
So I just want to say, out there, anybody watching, be nice to everyone up here on stage, this is hard, running for office, and everyone's working really hard. I just, my question is for you, my friend, so what has been your best experience through this campaign, knocking on doors?
That's a really good question. A month ago, maybe? No, no, it wasn't a month ago, it was three weeks ago. I went door knocking, and there was a resident who came out, Latino, and that's an important part of the story, and he shared with me he had recently had a stroke, and apologized to me for not being able to articulate very well, and I said, don't need to, no need to apologize, you just had a stroke, so don't know, you communicate however you want to communicate. And then, as I started to speak to him, and, you know, he, he recognized the importance of underrepresentation. Less than 1% of elected officials across this country are Latino. Latino are about almost 20% of the population, and so there's a great need for representation. But that's not the point of the story. The point of the story is this, he then shared with me, right, that the day before, his son had been sent to Kuwait, it's in the army. In that moment, I realized even more how important it is to have strong representation, regardless if it's in the city council or the federal.
Try to wrap it up quick.
And so I'll say this briefly then, I know this is a city council race, I know that we take care of potholes, we take care of road diets, we take care of crosswalks, but we also are elected to get strong leadership that can have tough conversations with other levels of government, and that's what I learned from feeling friendly. Thank you.
And thank you all for handling that well, I think that was useful. So we'll move to quick 30-second closing statements, we're almost at two hours, so we'll start with Jesus.
I want to thank everybody at home, I want to thank everybody here, I want to thank the Long Beach Post, and where's Austin, over there somewhere? I want to thank everybody for giving me an opportunity. I want to remember one thing, I'm just like you, I'm not a politician, I just, I'm tired of people moving to the deserts, people, I'm tired of people not being able to afford this place, I'm tired of crime going up in the last year, I'm, I'm tired of getting tickets, I'm tired that we have no adult schools, no school buses, no daycares for our kids, I'm tired of all that. I'm here for you, I'm here for the people. So one more time, I don't want your money, I don't want endorsements, I just want your vote.
Thank you, Jesus.
Thank you.
Robert.
I appreciate this forum also. It's nice to reach out to everyone. I'm really appreciative of having the trust of the second district, as they've elected me president of all the neighborhood associations that I've been part of. And once again, being president of Broadway after a rest for a while. I enjoy that trust, and for 35 years, I think I've proven myself as a capable, solutions-oriented leader in the city. I think they once said I was the biggest antagonist to the city. But I think I'm the biggest supporter.
Okay. Eduardo.
Hi, Long Beach. I'm running to ensure that I am your champion, and that I listen, and that I bring communities together. I am sharing with all of you today, that I was recently endorsed, and making it public today, with the California Nurses Association, one of the more progressive unions in our country. This speaks to my commitment to ensuring that everyday workers have strong leadership, know the talk, but also walk that walk.
Thank you, Eduardo.
So thank you, Long Beach, and with me, you're gonna have quality representation on city council.
All right.
I don't think you need experience and longstanding ties to the community, to care about the community, and have good ideas. I, I don't think you need pre-established political connections to get those ideas implemented and put into place. I think politics is about deciding who gets what, when, and how, and we, as a community, should be making those decisions together. Once again, my name is Nigel Lifce. Thank you to the Long Beach Post and the DLBA for hosting this event, and thank you all for attending and watching online. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and hopefully your vote.
Thank you. Ryan?
I really love living in Long Beach. I'm not trying to use the city council position as a stepping stone to become a career politician in Sacramento or Washington DC. I intend to live here permanently. So I want Long Beach to thrive, not just for real estate developers and property managers, for all you guys. I've accepted no contributions from super PACs, corporations, businesses, just an average of $10 from average people just like you. So if anything I'm saying here resonates with your beliefs, you're someone who's gonna fight hard against climate change, and address homelessness, and the only scientifically proven model, vote for me, Ryan Lum. Check my website, RyanLum.net, thank you.
Thank you.
I will thank you. I just want to say this, I am a proud Democrat, and I'm the only one up here on this stage that won the endorsement of the party, and I'm proud of that. And I'm gonna work hard to make sure that I uphold all of our collective values. I too love Long Beach, I love growing up here, and going to school here, and working here, and having a business here, and, and owning a home here. This district matters. This District 2 matters for the entire city, and District 2 needs a strong leader, and I will be a strong voice for this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeanette.
So I am asking the voter at home to consider your voting history. Historically, we continue to vote in the same business professionals. We continue to vote in property investors, retired police, cops, teachers, and what would it hurt to take a chance on electing the first female mental health provider in social work to the city council? We are in a social crisis, and yet we have nobody up here, or elected, that has ever spent the thousands of hours in your home, or on the streets assisting us in this social crisis. So I'm asking for the voter at home to consider to making a change. We don't need another elected official with the same working professions that we have up there now. Thank you.
All right. And that's all we have for tonight. I want to thank all of you again for coming out, and thank you to our live studio audience for attending, and our online audience as well. And we will be sharing the video of tonight's event out on our social channels at LBPost.com. And also thank you to the DLBA for co-hosting. And the most important thing is please vote on March 3rd.